Good evening, everyone. We are ready to begin tonight's meeting. The Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer them. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting this evening. Thank you. Item four: Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped calling roll, didn't I? Let's take care of roll call.
Chair Noddy?
Here.
Vice Chair Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengus? Excused. Commissioner Trowbridge? Excused. Commissioner Creer?
Here.
Commissioner Cherry?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to item four: Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Thank you. Moving on to item five. This is for housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the September 13th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, items 37, 38, and 39, ZON 64861, VAR 64862, and VAR 64864. The following items have also been requested to be held in abeyance to the October 11th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, items 22 through 27, GPA 64830, ZON 64831, GPA 64834, ZON 64833, GPA 64835, and ZON 64836. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Hearing none, Commissioner Schlotman, your motion on the housekeeping items, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on items 37, 38, and 39, I would make a motion to hold those items until the September 13th, 2016 Planning Commission hearing, and on items 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27, I would move to hold those items until the October 11th, 2016 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. Thank you. The motion is made for those abeyances. Thank you. That motion carries. We are now to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one-motion-one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public-hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with related items 6, 7, and 8. Item 6 is GPA 64582. The applicant-owner is Richie Lattz for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from SC to GC at 4021 North Rancho Drive in Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item 7 is ZON 64583 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from C1 to C2 in Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item 8 is SDR 64584 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 21,440-square-foot wholesale showroom facility in Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Before I read items 9 through 12, I will be abstaining on these. And that is, bear with me, it is because of my firm's relationship with D.R. Horton, which puts me in a conflict. Item 9 is GPA 64764. The applicant is D.R. Horton Incorporated. The owner is J. Bruce Alverson Limited. Employee Profit Sharing Plan and Trust Agreement for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from M., Medium Density Residential, to O., Office, on the site of Charleston Boulevard west of Tenaya Way in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 10 is ZON 64765 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RTH, Single Family Attached, to PO, Professional Office, in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Related items 11 and 12. Item 11, GPA 64773. The applicant is D.R. Horton Incorporated. The owner is Diamond Creek Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from M., Medium Density Residential, to SC, Service Commercial, on the south side of Charleston Boulevard west of Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 1, staff recommends approval. Item 12 is ZON 64774 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RTH, Single Family Attached, to C1, Limited Commercial, in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Items 13, 14, and 15 are related. Item 13 is GPA 64811. The applicant is Providence Plaza LLC, and the owner is Providence Plaza Exchange LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Planned Community Development, to SC, Service Commercial, at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Walupi Way in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item 14 is ZON 64812 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from PD, Plan Development, to C1, Limited Commercial, in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 15 is TMP 64814 for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a two-lot commercial subdivision at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Walupi Way in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Items 16 and 17 are related. Item 16 is ZON 64975. The applicant-owner is Sand Hill Villas LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to R3, Medium Density Residential, at the southeast corner of Owens Avenue and Sand Hill Road in Ward 3, staff recommends approval. Item 17 is SDR 64976 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 30-unit multifamily residential development with a waiver of the perimeter landscape standards to allow a zero-foot buffer along the east property line where six feet is required at the southeast corner of Owens Avenue and Sand Hill Road in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Items 18 and 19 are related. 18 is SUP 64857. The applicant-owner is Durango I-95 LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 75,000-square-foot mini-storage facility at 7737 North El Capitan Way in Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item 19 is SDR 64859 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 75,000-square-foot miniStorage facility at 7737 North El Capitan Way in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. And finally, item 20 is SUP 64669. The applicant is Montelamar Incorporated. The owner is Rampart PhD LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,775-square-foot pubs, bars, and lounges, beer-wine cooler, on sale establishment use at 2120 North Rampart Boulevard, Suite 150, in Ward 2. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chair?
With regard to the items that you're going to be out on GPA 647, 64, number 9, and number 11?
Yes.
Because those require a supermajority of the Planning Commission in order to approve those, and you're abstaining on those, those can either be held until the next meeting, or you can vote on them, and they'll go on to council as a denial for its failure to reach a supermajority.
Mr. Chairman, but we have four commissioners here, so we could possibly have a supermajority?
No, you couldn't, because it requires five.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Either, I mean, I don't know if you want the applicant to make that determination, if they'd like to go forward with it, and it would go on as a denial, even if all five of you, four of you voted in the affirmative, it would go on as a denial to council, or they could hold it to the next meeting when there'd be the other commissioners here, and they could have the full five.
Okay. Let's hear from the applicant on these.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. I think the preference would be to hold it tonight, so that we don't move forward with a denial, if that's okay with the commissioner.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do any members of, any other members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a vote.
Excuse me. Since you're going to hold those items in abeyance, can we extract those and act on the ones that you're going to approve, and then hold the others in abeyance?
So, two different motions?
Please. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear, so items 11 through, um, 11 through 12?
11 through 12. Vice Chair?
9 through 12. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 6 through 8, and items 13 through 20, on the one-motion-one vote.
Thank you. Motion is made. Please vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, items 6, 7, 8, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 will be heard at the City Council meeting on September 7th. Items 18, 19, and 20 are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, a question for you. Would items 9 through 12 be held to the August 9th Planning Commission hearing, or the September 13th?
Maybe the Director could answer that, but I don't think there's time for the August 9th one.
They would have to be held until the September meeting, and just for clarification, those would be noticed on the agenda and in briefings with council as a reason for that failure. So, I don't know if the applicant wants to reconsider holding these until September, or with the notice that it failed only because it didn't reach a supermajority noted, that's entirely up to you.
Sorry, if I may again, Mr. Chairman, because of the hold--
I'm sorry, will you just state your name and address?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. Because the hold would take until September, I guess we would prefer to take the denial tonight, as long as it's clear that it was just for lack of a majority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, on items 9 through 12, on the one-motion-one vote, I would move for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Noting my abstention, although that carries, we lack the supermajority because we're missing two of our planning commissioners, so that will go forward with a denial, but for a vote before a City Council?
And, Chairman, that's only on items number 9 and 11, which require the supermajority.
Oh, okay. Very good.
And, Mr. Chairman, items 9, 10, 11, and 12 will all be heard at the City Council meeting on September 7th.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the public-hearing items, beginning with item 21. This is an abeyance item for re-notification. SUP 64491. The applicant is Glenn Rubin, and the owner is Douglas B. Kayes at AL. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 9,450-square-foot motorcycle, motor-scooter sales within an existing swap meet with a waiver to allow outdoor display and sales at 1717 South Decatur Boulevard in Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, staff cannot support the requested waiver to allow display and sales activities to take place outside the building, as the proposed use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing and future surrounding land uses. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Douglas Kayes, 1717 South Decatur, Las Vegas. I'm one of the owners of the property.
I'm Glenn Rubin. I'm the owner of the business, looking for the special use permit.
Okay. Would you like to tell us anything?
Well, originally, this was on one-motion-one vote, but it didn't allow the outside display, so that's really what the issue is at this point. Had we accepted the one-motion-one vote, we would have been done with this, but we really, the business owner really is looking for the opportunity to display the bikes outside. Again, you're about 400 feet off of Decatur and 100 feet off of Oki, and so it would just be displayed right within the immediate 60 feet outside of the building. If you have anything you want to add, Glenn, it's your--
No, just, that's, you know, that aspect of my business is crucial, you know? If we're looking to get into a new location, I don't believe it's affecting anything in any way. It's on their private property, and like Doug mentioned, it's clearly away from any traffic, Oki and Decatur, set far, pretty far back on private property.
We have had a discussion with Councilwoman Tarkanian, and I won't speak for her, other than she said she had no issue with it, except that she did not want any test rides on the streets. She wanted test rides to stay within Fantastic's parking lot.
Okay.
If there's nothing else.
I'm going to open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 21? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can discuss this as a planning commission. Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, Mr. Rubin.
Yes.
I've watched the swap meet over there for 25 years. It's my neighborhood.
Okay.
And I do have a concern, and the concern is, if I was to go there with a son, or whatever, to buy one of your motorcycles, or whatever they're going to be, I would want to test drive it. I would not just buy it off your lot and take it home. So, you're going to have to convince me about the test driving, because I know I break the law weekly by cutting through that parking lot to get around it. I do, I admit it. When Decatur's backed up, I shoot right through it. When Oki's backed up, and I'm very concerned about the safety of where these bikes are going to be test drove, because I can't imagine anybody buying one without it. So, could you please answer that?
Sure. Yeah, I would say it's going to be handled on the Oki side of the building, not mixed in with the main parking section, you know, very slowly, very carefully supervised.
Will that be fenced in?
I'm sorry?
Will that be fenced in?
The area right now is not fenced in.
No.
But we could designate, how do you feel about the backside? The backside of the building?
I feel better about the backside, sir, than I do about the front, and I just think it would be okay to, I think it would be great to, you know, put out some cones, or, you know, do something, because people fly through there.
Absolutely.
And you're the liability, not me.
I don't want to interrupt, but, believe me, we're as much interested in safety--
Right.
--in general--
Okay.
--as anybody is.
We absolutely could cone--
Yeah, so we definitely aren't going to have people mixed up in the front parking lot, driving around, you know, thousands of people driving around that parking--
And you also know how my councilwoman feels about a lot of outdoor signage, you know? It just can't be plastered all over the place. It's got to look as nice as it has for 25 years.
Actually, 28.
28.
We're coming up on 28.
Right. I mean, we definitely want the signage, but we want to make it very presentable, aesthetically, pleasingly, at the same time.
My other question is, your drawing is not very clear, so could you show for us the drawing of how it's going to be fenced in? Because I'd like my fellow planning commissioners to see the drawing, please, of how you're fencing them in.
Sure.
Because I did get calls about burglaries.
Well, you have up the site plan stamped 6/2016--
Yes.
--on your, see the dotted line?
Yes.
That is the display area. We weren't actually looking to use a fence. We thought that was unsightly. We thought we would use large, and I mean large, cement planters, so that we could put landscape in them, and we would, so that cars couldn't go into that area.
Is that what you're going to do? That's a great idea.
That's what we're, that's our plan. We want to add the aesthetic to it. So, we would do the large cement planters to keep cars from coming in, and then that would be the defined area.
Okay. With that, I'm going to listen to my other planning commissioners. If they don't have any other objections, I'll be prepared to make a motion.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Since these are electronic, are motorized scooters, what's the noise that they're going to be making in terms of, are they--
There are scooters, aren't like motorcycles in that respect. You, you know, I mean, unless you're standing right next to them, you can't hear them running.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, they do make noise. My kids in my neighborhood--
Unless somebody had it illegally modified, they don't make a lot of noise. I can't tell you the exact decibel level--
Yeah.
--but they're very low noise.
Okay. And so you plan to showcase these, and then the planters will not be visible? So, if you're coming up Oki, what would be visible off of Oki will be the planters?
Correct.
So, it's not until you get into the shopping center, really, if you're facing east, looking at the facility, then--
You would see the cone, not the cones, you would see the planters, Commissioner, and then within the area that's defined by the planters, you would see the motorcycles, not, we keep saying motorcycles--
Yeah, scooters.
They're scooters.
And they're like, they're the kick scooters with the--
They don't, you don't kick them anymore.
Yeah.
They're all electric, they're--
Yeah, right.
They're essentially motorized moped without the pedals.
Okay. And you plan to store them there also, in that area, overnight? That's where your storage is going to be?
In the facility, not in a front--
So, you're going to bring them out?
Not outside, no.
Right. So, you'll bring them out every day?
Bring them out, bring them back, all the displays--
And then bring them back inside?
Models come back in. Yeah, absolutely.
And then on the inside, you'll have enough area to properly store them?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, there won't be any riding around inside the mall, or any--
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Unless Doug allows it, no, it's--
Yeah.
A little later, no.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Comment from the Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a quick question for the applicant. Are you aware of our sign ordinances?
Sign ordinances?
Yes.
I'm not personally, at this point.
Okay. Get to know our sign ordinances, because illegal signs go up on scooter sales, car lots, this and that. No signs allowed on your property without going to the city and pulling a permit, and, you know, if you start putting up those signs, and your special use permit could get rejected or get pulled, and you could lose your license. So, don't put up a whole bunch of sign spam and everything around your property without going to the planning department, pulling a signed permit. No further comments.
Okay.
A question to the Chair. Are the scooters, scooters that are registered through the DMV, or are they--
It's mixed. Right now, at this current time, the, if they're under 49 cc's and under certain horsepower and only capable of going 30 miles an hour and under, they're not. But that is supposedly going to change by the end of the year. And right now, of course, anything over that, yes, it has to be registered, basically the same as a motorcycle would.
Got it. And maybe a question for staff. Is it, they have to have a test drive route submitted as part of the approval? Is that true?
Can I answer that?
Through you, Chairman. Motor vehicle sales used news for actual automobiles requires the submittal of a test route to be submitted to staff for administrative review and approval. The motor scooters and motorcycles doesn't have that included in the special use permit requirements, but in other zoning districts, it would.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion.
Thank you very much. Because your site plan is changing a bit with the planters, which the councilwoman and the council has not seen, tonight I'm going to make a motion for approval on item number 21, adding the condition that you pull signed permits before you put them up, adding the conditions, a condition that you have new drawings for the city councilwoman that include these planters versus a fence that we see here. And I think that's about it, but it will not be final action tonight, because I think there's some changes here that need to go upstairs, that need to go to the council. So, with that, I'll make a motion for approval of SUP 64491, following my new conditions. Thank you.
Okay. Before we vote, a question for the city attorney. Is that a recommendation or a condition, as proposed by--
It's a recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, although I don't think we need your approval, but are you in agreement with the recommendation Commissioner Quinn made?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. All right. Please vote.
Thank you.
Our motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard by City Council on September 7th.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 28 and 29. Item 28 is GPA 64853. The applicant-owner is Double Double LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from DR, Desert Rural Density Residential, to Low Density Residential on the south side of Centennial Parkway west of Fort Apache Road in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 29 is ZON 64854 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to R1, Single Family Residential, in Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Can we please have the staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the amending of the subject site's general plan designation and associated zoning district will allow for logical transition from the higher-density properties to the north and assisted living uses to the east, to the half-acre or larger lots to the south. As such, staff is recommending approval of both applications. Please note that the signs were posted in conformance with open-meeting law, as well as additional letters of protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairperson Randy Black, 10789 West Twain, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89135. I've just been approached by Mr. Taylor, who represents a few of the neighbors. We haven't had a chance to have a discussion after we've had the neighborhood meeting held at the YMCA, and he's asked me to postpone this meeting so that we can have a discussion with neighbors, to see if we can get on board together and come up with some plans, so that there's not me proposing a use that we haven't had a chance to see, we can come to an agreement with some of the potentially dissenting neighbors on this. So, with that said, what is the next Planning Commission calendar meeting that we could postpone this to?
Mr. Chairman, that's September 13th. Is that okay?
September 13th?
That would be great, if we could do that.
So, is that your request for an abeyance until the September 13th Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Black.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Nathan Taylor, 8414 West Farm Road. We're in agreement with that. 30 days will give me time to do some due diligence on this and see if we can come to an agreement.
Okay. Very good. Sounds like we've got agreement at least between two of you for an abeyance.
Really nice.
I'm going to open this for any further public comment. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Come on up, and I'm going to ask whether you're in agreement to obey this until the September 13th Planning Commission, rather than get into the merits at this point.
May I refer to the merits?
I'm, I'm gonna ask you to first state your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Brian Vedder, uh, 9325 West, uh, Regina Avenue, uh, very near to this site. May I just address the merits of this application?
So what, what I'm going to ask you to do, you, you certainly have a right to address the merits. I wanna know first whether you oppose the abeyance.
Oppose, oppose.
You oppose it? You'd like it to be heard tonight? I think what I'm going to do is take a vote on the abeyance, okay?
Very well.
First of all, and the reason I'm doing this is because i-if it gets obeyed, you're going to have the right to come back and speak on this.
Exactly.
But I wanna make it clear to you that, um, during the citizens' participation, item 45, at the very conclusion of the meeting, if you wish to make a record and speak about the merits of this case, you certainly have a right to do it at that point, or come back, uh, at the September 13th meeting.
Well, I'll definitely come back, uh, September 13th.
Okay.
I've not had a chance to meet Mr. Taylor yet either, so I'm pleased to do that tonight.
I like the idea of an abeyance to give everyone a chance to meet, so, uh, I'm just gonna ask you to step back for, for a minute, let us take the vote. And again, if you wish to, to make remarks, you're certainly welcome to at the conclusion of the meeting, under item 45.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and see if there's any discussion amongst the planning commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on, uh, related items 28 and 29, uh, would move to hold these until the September 13th, 2016 planning commission hearing.
Okay, very good. The motion is to obey these items to the September 13th planning commission. Please vote. Motion carries. Those items are obeyed. We'll look forward to seeing you in September.
Thank you, appreciate that. One quick question for staff. There was a notification issue from the last meeting where this was moved. Would this abeyance require another public notice?
Great question.
To you, Mr. Chairman. No, the abeyance is the public notice, so there is no additional postcards being sent out.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to related items 30 through 36, beginning with item 30. GPA 64870. The applicant owner is NP Palace LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from MXU Mixed Use M Medium Density Residential and H High Density Residential to SC Service Commercial at 2750 and 2550 South Rancho Drive, 2501 Wyandotte Street, and 2411 West Sahara Boulevard in Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Item 31 is ZON 64871. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from R4 High Density Residential to C1 Limited Commercial in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 32 is SUP 64872. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 42,252 square foot expansion to an existing gaming establishment, non-restricted use in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 33 is SUP 64873. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 335-foot building height within the airport overlay district where 175 feet is the maximum height allowed in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 34 is SUP 64874. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed expansion to an existing hotel in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Item 35 is SDR 64875. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 176,693 square foot expansion of an existing hotel casino, including a new 335-foot tall hotel tower, exterior facade improvements, parking and landscaping enhancements, and a central utility plant in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. And item 36, TMP 64882. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision at the southwest corner of Rancho Drive and West Sahara Avenue in Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is proposing to consolidate multiple lots to allow the expansion of an existing resort, resort hotel casino through the addition of casino floor area and a new hotel tower. The general plan amendment and rezoning are housekeeping items that will provide consistent land use and zoning across the site, allowing it to be remapped into a single lot through the mapping process. Special use permits and especially, the site development plan review are required to expand the casino floor by approximately 42,000 square feet and the hotel used by 159 rooms and to exceed allowable height within the airport overlay district for the proposed hotel tower. Staff supports all requests as the site is appropriate, is an appropriate location for the uses, both existing and proposed. However, staff does not support the request, exception for landscaping islands in the southern parking lot, and a condition has been added to the site development plan review to require that the islands be installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, for the record, my name is Richard Bryan with the law firm of Fenimore Craig, 300 South Forest Street here in Las Vegas, Nevada, 8901, and I appear here on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined by Mr. Joe Haley, who is the senior vice president of design and construction for stations. Some 40 years ago, Frank Fertitta Jr. had a dream of having a casino off the Las Vegas Strip designed basically for, for locals. He had come to Las Vegas in 1960 as a 21-year-old and first began his work within the casino industry as a bellman at the Tropicana Hotel, and ultimately worked his way up to general manager of the Fremont Hotel Casino. In 1976, his dream materialized with Bingo Palace. It's opened, celebrating its 40th anniversary, which was renamed at a later time, Palace Station, the name that it bears today. Upon his retirement to his sons, Frank Fertitta III and Lorenzo continued with his dream. And today, the Fertitta properties involve some 21 locations here in southern Nevada, employing more than 12,000 people. The items before you, 30 through 36, essentially would recognize the largest remodeling of stations' properties since 1976. And among those items would be the new tower, a new bingo room, a new buffet, two new restaurants, uh, uh, modernizing the facade with some landscaping improvements. Uh, I think the record will reflect that there were three neighborhood meetings. The reaction was positive. The only consistent theme that occurred in those meetings was a request, "Please, please do not remove the oyster bar." And we have assured the neighbors that that will remain. And so, uh, that enjoys staff approval, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman. And with your permission, I'd like to yield to Mr. Joe Haley, if he could take you through the details of this development plan. And after his comment, we'd be happy to respond to any questions, and then we'd reserve time, if there are any comments that come at a later point in time that we need to respond to. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I would yield to Mr. Haley, if that's, uh, agreeable to you, sir.
That's, uh, that's great. The good gentleman from Las Vegas.
Uh, Joe Haley, 10204 Owls Peak Court, Las Vegas. And, uh, as Senator Bryan said, I'm, uh, the senior vice president of design and construction for Station Casinos. First couple things, I don't know if you can see this, what I have in front of me? Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
You've got it.
Uh, the first couple items I was, I was gonna run through quickly is just the, uh, the zoning change that we had asked for. And, and what we're, what we're really looking to do is, you know, the palace is, is on multiple parcels right now. Um, there's, there's one parcel that is not zoned the same as everything else. This is a residential piece. And we'd like to bring that into conformity, so that all of the, all of the parcels that Palace is on, uh, all has the same zoning designation. From a general, uh, plan standpoint or land use, um, it's the same, same kinda issue. We have three other parcels. There's zone HM and, and mixed use, and we'd like to bring those all, uh, into, into the same designation as service commercial. Uh, to get you familiar with, uh, with the renovation and what we're proposing, this, this is Palace as it stands today, uh, Sahara I-15. And the original Bingo Palace, um, is right here, um, that and several, several expansions. But this is, this is the oldest piece of the building, all wood construction, um, you know, built in the 70s, early 80s, along with, um, the, the courtyard hotel rooms here, which are also, um, some of the earliest pieces of construction, all wood, um, on the property. Uh, what we're looking to do, um, over several, um, planned expansions, and I'll, I'll kinda run through what those are, is we're essentially going to take out the, the courtyard rooms, this whole east side of the property, um, the old wood structure, and we're gonna add a couple of new structures on the, on the front here, put some parking in the back. Going into the detail a little bit, um, and I'll talk about the phasing as I walk through this. The first, the first phase that we're gonna do is build a new bingo room. Currently, our, our existing bingo room sits, sits right about over here. Um, we wanted to upgrade the facility. We also don't wanna have any, um, any loss of, of use. So the plan is we're gonna build this new bingo room as, as our, what we're calling a Phase 1A. Um, along with, there's a lot of utilities that, that feed the bingo room and feed some of this future expansion out in here. So we're gonna be doing quite a bit of utility work and some, some working in the parking lot, but really it's to support this bingo room. So that's, that's our Phase 1A. As part as, as the next phase, which we're calling 1B, um, it's, it's gonna be this whole east side here. And what we're doing is demoing the old Bingo Palace and about 25, 30% of the courtyard rooms. Um, we're gonna leave the other rooms in operation in the, in the interim while we build this first phase. And the idea is, we're gonna put a new, a new buffet on the ground floor, two new restaurant boxes. There's some new casino space that really is, uh, just to keep everything contiguous. Um, and then a lot of back-of-house functions. The, the reason for this is our loading dock sits where our future hotel's gonna go. All our utilities into the property are original, and they run right through some of the planned construction. So we're gonna build a large section of the back-of-house in order to put in new, uh, infrastructure. So that's, that's, uh, kind of our, our Phase 1B, and we're, we're teed up to do that. The one, the one other thing with that is we're gonna reskin the entire low rise. So all the trains, the old trains and that theming on the outside, we're gonna, we're gonna modernize the exterior of the building, um, put a new valet here, uh, in the front on the Sahara side. There's currently a valet here, but it's not covered, so this will be a covered, a covered, uh, drop-off area, uh, some more convenience for the guests. And that's, that's really our, our, um, called our, our second phase or Phase 1B. The balance of the work, the main, the main component of is a new hotel tower. So the new, the existing hotel tower sits right about here. The new hotel tower, um, is adjacent to it. We're looking at 27 stories, 600 rooms. Um, the existing courtyard right now is 477 rooms, so increase in the, in the room, uh, the number of rooms. Um, we're, we're also looking to put in, uh, a brand-new convention center, so meeting and convention space, about 40,000 square foot of net sellable space. And then a resort pool with cabanas, lounge bar, um, you know, and other, other amenities as well that we don't have there now. The other component of it would be going back and relocating the current charcoal room and the oyster bar, which are in the center of the property right now, and moving that over here to where you'd have a steakhouse, oyster bar, and then the potential for another, we're calling it noodle bars, placeholder, but another restaurant over here as well. And then taking that center area and making that, um, a relocated cage and a, a bar lounge area. As, as another consideration, one thing we're, we're also contemplating is, um, doing a, a small boutique cinema and bowling alley on the roof of this, of this new section right here. So the structure, when we build this, will, will all be designed to support that future, um, component. Um, at this point in time, anything, uh, really that Phase 2 piece, which is the hotel tower, the meeting space, and this, we haven't set a timetable on. We've, uh, we are moving forward with the Phase 1A and 1B, but the balance of it, um, is still kind of in consideration of when that happens in time. This last piece is just, uh, hotel, hotel rooms, um, just general plan of what we're contemplating for. A hotel floor plate, and then up on the roof, um, we're also asking for a, a restaurant lounge and outdoor terrace. Uh, take advantage of some of the, some of the views, um, of the strip out here as well. From an elevation standpoint, um, these, these kinda depict the, the new hotel tower, uh, and how that compares to the existing hotel height. Uh, so, uh, a taller tower, I mean, it's the, the tower's taller by about, uh, by 85 feet, taller than the existing tower, about 35 feet higher than the flagpole is right now. Um, and then the entire low rise will get kind of a new, modern skin and some signage. Um, the signage at this point in time, we're not bringing forward. Uh, that's something that we're gonna, uh, present at a later date, cause we're still kinda working on that, as well as what happens with our pylon sign and the signage on the building. And then these are some renderings, um, to show kind of a daytime view of what the, uh, of what the renovation would look like. Uh, this is the corner where there'd be a, uh, one of the restaurants, which would be a two-story restaurant. This would be the box for the, for the cinemas and the bowling alley, and then you can get a glimpse of what the, what the extra facade would look like on the low rise as well. Uh, this is just a light, night view of the same, same, uh, elevation. And then this is coming from the south, uh, so northbound on I-15, looking at the other side. So this, this, this area right here would be the convention center, uh, turn in the corner here and then the, the rest of the casino.
Okay.
Any questions?
We will, uh, open this for public comment. Does anyone in here wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and, uh, we can discuss this as a planning commission, starting with the vice chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a question for the applicant through you. Are you getting rid of the two-story hotel on the side, or are you keeping that?
The courtyard?
Yes.
Uh, the court, the courtyard goes away.
Oh, okay.
For the, for the meeting space. Um, in the first phase, only, like I said, about 25, 30% of it. And then the balance comes out when we, uh, when we build the hotel tower in the meeting space.
Good. Uh, when I first moved here, like, 15 years ago, I didn't wanna stay on the strip, and I didn't wanna stay, um, downtown on Fremont Street. And so I said, "Well, Palace Station's close enough," and it looked like a decent hotel, so went in, nice hotel, and they gave me a room key, and I go down this hallway, and I got tricked into going to this two-story-like hotel next door that, uh, didn't, it wasn't, wasn't, uh, all too appealing. But I'm glad to see that you're getting rid of that and doing something great here. Uh, you know, hopefully, the next person who moves here will go into this nice, beautiful, uh, new building and not have to go, uh, over there. And increase the size of the oyster bar. I'm tired of having to go to Sunset Station, uh, because this place, uh, over here is two-packed. So anyways, uh, love your project, and, um, I'm, worked with Terry Murphy just a bit on some of the landscaping, and, uh, I'm glad you worked with staff and got, uh, put in the additional landscaping, so staff's now recommending approval. Uh, I'll support this project, and, uh, I don't have any further questions or comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I, I just wanna, uh, note that for 10 years, I worked for Station Casinos, um, in multiple capacities, and, uh, more intimately, I worked as a director of marketing for Palace Station, um, twice. I say I did two tours of duty at, at Palace, and, uh, but I do not feel as though my support for this project will, you know, be hindered. I haven't worked for stations in 12, 13 years or so. Um, they also were a former client of my advertising firm, but we haven't done work for them in, uh, a number of years, so I don't think I will be any, um, any, any gain for this. Um, I, I, I know this property well. Um, I started out, you know, really dealing cards on graveyard and working my way into the sports book and to the slot department and to, uh, hotel sales and casino marketing and marketing. Uh, I know it intimately well, and it's, uh, when I was there, we called it the garden rooms versus the courtyard. Uh, a little bit of an upgrade, which is, which is great. Uh, I'm, I'm excited. I live, you know, close to here. Uh, you know, I'm sure we would frequent the Palace Station. Uh, we do, and we'll frequent it again with all the upgrades that are happening. One technical question, though, I ask is about the roadway on Rancho.
Mm-hmm.
Going southbound as you pass Sahara.
Right.
It turns into the on-ramp for I-15, and then you can go down, uh, Rancho and goes back that way. Uh, is there gonna be any thoughts about expansion of that or how that works? I know the freeway is there, and I don't know, you might be... I know the freeway is there, and I don't know, you might be landlocked, but, you know, you're going to create a lot of traffic really down a one-way street that I think you're going to be, have a much larger flow coming through there once this expansion happens.
Well, really, one of the nice things that we're doing is, really, this whole back area now is going to be back-of-house. So, we're, you know, right now, you've got parking back here, parking for the...
That'd be team member drop-off and pick-up and drop-off. There are these, the team members still park in, so in the back here, I'll be gone with team member parking.
Yeah, team members will park in the garages primarily or over in this area.
Yeah.
This, we're looking at this most likely as parking for the convention center, so if you wanted to park and just go into a, you know, into a meeting without having to walk through the entire casino, you could do that. So, that was really the reasoning for this. But from a traffic standpoint, you know, the bulk of our traffic comes in, you know, from Sahara. There's very little that comes in on the backside on Teddy.
I agree with you. I'm just saying that once you do these expansions and you're going to start drawing more people down to the Rancho side of it, because that's where a lot of your action's going to be, whether it's for the movies or what have you, and I think that should probably take into consideration. You know, I agree with you, getting the zoning properly in place for the property to do the expansion, but I just wonder, I mean, you can drive traffic anywhere you want to in your plan and how you market it and how you drive people. Maybe it won't be an issue, but I would hate for it to become an issue.
Well, is it this, you know, anyone coming this direction right now is going to get directed down Teddy rather than the other way? I mean, this is all NDOT right away?
Yes.
Yeah.
And also, this is not your project, but, you know, they had the, must have putting the miniature golf place down there, Scandia, that's gone away. Is that part of NDOT, is that part of Project Neon? Do you guys know, or is, because, you might not know.
Yeah.
I'm just sort of talking out loud, but, you know, I don't know if that's going to drive a lot more traffic down that Rancho curve as well, once you do your project, once that comes aboard or what have you. And then I don't know what the impact of Project Neon's going to happen. Have you guys discussed that at all with NDOT?
We did meet with NDOT and went through Project Neon and went through how this sequenced and the timing of it, and, you know, we were, yeah, all good.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'll definitely support the project. I'm excited to see Palace Station getting some love.
We are too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carrer?
Through the chair. It's exciting to see the project. I know these, I have some experience with the older buildings, and they're usually littered with fire issues and ADA issues, and as they're kind of rehabbed, these will bring a lot of those up to current standards. The one comment I have is that I hope, and I know Stations will be sensitive, the fact that when you have one tower shut down, that you have some accessible rooms in the other tower to accommodate, and I know you will do that because you do it in your other properties as well, so with that, I will be supporting the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
27 years ago, Mr. Fertitta gave me my first job, which was a ticket writer in the race and sports book at the Bingo Palace. And for the record, everyone knows here that my son has worked, he's employee number 27 for the UFC, and he's been there, he's now 29. Due to the fact that the Stations are now a public company and due to the fact that the UFC has sold, I feel very confident in voting on this tonight and very proud. My only regret is that Mr. Fertitta is not here to see this great stuff.
Yes.
It got me a little teary. I did have one question, because of course disability parking is very important to me, and Ms. Murphy did tell me that it's a little bit short in areas, so could you just address that for me, please? That's kind of one of my big issues is the parking.
You know, from, you know, I don't know actually every one of the, which of the parking spaces we've designated for ADA, but I know that when we reviewed this with the architect, we were actually going to overcompensate for ADA because they're such a big part of our business.
Yes.
We were going to put more ADA spaces than were required.
Great.
I think we probably met the minimum on the application, but just from a practical standpoint, we will go over.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to waste any more of your time. I'm just extremely excited for our ward, I'm excited for our city, and I'm excited for this endeavor. Would you like me to read them one at a time, Mr. Chairman, or would you like me to read them all and make one motion? What is your request?
We need to go one at a time, so if you'll just start with item 30.
Thank you.
You don't need to read the whole thing, just the number.
No. Okay. Regarding item number 30, GPA 64870, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation with all conditions for approval.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding the zoning, 64871, number 31, my motion is also to follow staff's recommendations this evening for approval.
Motion carries.
Regarding item number 32, SUP 64872, my motion is also for approval following all of staff's recommendations.
Motion also carries.
Thank you. Regarding item number 33, SUP 64873, my motion is also to follow staff's recommendations this evening for approval.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding item number 34, SUP 64874, my motion is also to follow staff's recommendations this evening for approval. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Moving on to number 35, SDR 64875, my motion is to follow staff's recommendations for approval following all of their conditions. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion carries.
And last but not least, number 36, TMP 64882, my motion is with pleasure to make a motion for approval with staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and members of the Commission. I was remiss in not extending apologies to each of you. Terry Murphy had intended to be here this evening. She had a family situation that required to be out of town, and she asked me to extend my apologies to each of you. I neglected to do that, but I wanted the record to reflect that.
You make a pretty good substitute, Senator.
Yeah.
I try to do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Mr. Chairman, items 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36 will be heard at City Council Meeting on September 7.
Okay, moving on to item 40. This is VAR 64652. The applicant owner is Sherri L. and Jeffrey L. Young. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a nine-foot corner yard setback for a proposed 144-square-foot accessory structure, Class II shed with attached patio cover where 15 feet is required, and to allow zero-foot distance separation from the primary dwelling where six feet is required at 6228 Old Tradition Street in Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant proposing a shed and an attached patio cover with a nine-foot corner setback where 15 feet is required, and a second patio cover attached to the primary dwelling located two inches from the proposed shed patio cover where six feet is required. There are no unique or extraordinary circumstances associated with this variance request, and therefore, it is considered a self-imposed hardship, and staff recommends denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Sherri Young, 6228 Old Tradition Street. My husband, Jeffrey.
Good evening.
So, the shed that we would like to have is going to be on the side of our property. We have a corner property, as you can see, and if you look through the gate, where the gate is right there, that we were proposing a patio cover to come out to the gate along that sidewall, and then a 12-by-12 shed workshop with a small patio on it, covered patio so we could work outside on that patio.
Okay.
Todd's the contractor.
Todd Morris, 4185 West Post Road, Tumbleweed Development. They submitted this information to their HOA prior to submitting for a variance, and the HOA has told them, as far as they're concerned, they're okay with it.
Okay, great. I'm going to open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on item 40? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. I do have one question for you, and maybe staff could help us bring up that picture showing the gate on the side. Is your intention to use that as kind of a driveway? Are you going to pave that back to the gate?
Oh, we were not going to pave it from the sidewalk back. That's just hard compact dust.
Chat.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there will be chat from there behind the wall as well.
You do need to come up if you're speaking.
I'm sorry.
I need you to state your name and address again.
Todd Morris, 4185 West Post Road. Their plan is to put the same chat material from inside the gate in their backyard, because they have a little utility trailer that they're going to keep underneath one of these covers, and he's going to use his shed, if he's allowed to build it, as a workshop.
Yeah, and let me just get right to my point. You see the L-curb there?
Right.
You know, that meets the sidewalk and connects the sidewalk to the roadway. I mean, this isn't, you're not going to be driving vehicles back and forth to this. It's certainly not what it was intended for, and I just want to make sure that's not your intention.
No.
Okay. All right, very good. Go ahead, Commissioner Carrer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, you know, you say that the HOA doesn't have a problem with this project. Do you have a letter or something for them? It's not in our materials or something to verify that?
No, we don't.
And I say that not to say that, you know, to, I don't say that to doubt your veracity. It's just, you know, people can come in and say, "The HOA's cool with it. HOA's not here." Then they say, "Well, we weren't cool with it. That's happened."
Well, we do have all the neighbors' signatures on the paperwork for the HOA.
Actually, Sherri received an email from Rachel today, who is with the HOA, and in that email, which she could show you, it states that Kathy, who represents the HOA, directed her to follow this procedure and let her know in the morning how it went. They took this to them first in order to get the gate done, and it included all of this other stuff, and they approved it, so they've already started the project.
Commissioner Carrer, does that answer your question?
Not really.
Okay.
And I say that because the email says, "Let us know how it turned out," is not, "We approve the..."
If you see the...
What you're submitting here today.
You see the gate that's there now?
I do.
That was part of this application to the HOA, which showed the sheds, the two covers, the gates, and they approved it, allowing, so that's the reason they've already got the gate there. It's already been through them and approved.
Let me just add, we did receive one protest letter, but, you know, the lack of opposition here tonight and the fact that we don't have more and, you know, with your statement tonight that you do have the support of your HOA, I'm okay. This is a unique parcel on the corner. I'm okay with the zero-foot separation on this, and so you're going to see my support on this tonight.
If I could add the two covers...
You can't. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Not unless there's a question for you. We've closed the public comment now. Any other comments? Commissioner Quinn?
No. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, regarding variance 64652, my recommendation is for approval.
Thank you. Motion is for approval of item 40. Please vote. Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 41, VAR 64716. The applicant owner is Charles S. and Tammy R. Cummins Trust. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a six-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for a proposed 1,070-square-foot accessory structure, Class II garage at 9112 Ghost Mountain Avenue in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the site's physical characteristics does not create a hardship that would warrant the proposed garage within the side yard setback. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Chairperson, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Chuck Cummins, 9112 Ghost Mountain Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129. I'm here today to seek approval from the Commission to build this garage in the rear part of my property. Originally set up, you can see the gate is already there, and I do have the driveway access that's already accessible and completed there, so I'm looking for the approval. In this community, we have 105 homes in the community, and there's already eight projects there that have received some type of setback variance in regards to the 10-foot setback. I do have HOA approval. I have a letter here from Mesa Management with the approval for that. In addition, I have the neighbors both to the west and to the east of me. 911 Ghost Mountain Avenue signed the release, the approval form, and 9116 Ghost Mountain Avenue also was a part of the neighborhood awareness form that approved it as well.
Have all of those been previously submitted?
To the city?
What you're referring to, yes.
No, they have not.
If you'll hand those to one of our staff, we'll make those a part of tonight's record. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm just hoping to seek the approval tonight. I was here about a year ago for my neighbor, Dennis Pritchard, and with a similar setback variance, which was a five-foot, it was directly across the street from me, and I was here and for him, and the approval was given then, so I'm hoping I can seek that same consideration tonight.
Little quid pro quo.
[laughing]
All right. I'm going to open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Dennis Pritchard, 9109 Ghost Mountain Avenue. I'm just here to support this project that Chuck is trying to do.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll close the public comment and see if there's any discussion amongst our Commissioners. Commissioner Quinn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Your new structure, will that match the house, the stucco, and it's going to look identical to your beautiful home?
Yes, it will. The same color roof and that, it's a requirement of the HOA approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion on item 41, VAR 64716, for approval.
Thank you. Motion is for approval on item 41. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that action is, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office in 10 days.
Item 42, good luck.
Thank you.
Item 42 is VAR 64848. The applicant owner is Jessica Frye. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required for a 1,380-square-foot accessory structure, Class II garage at 4830 Von Leidner Street in Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by proposing building setbacks that do not meet Title 1906 requirements. Staff recommends denial of the request. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Jessica Frye, and I'm at 4830 Von Leidner Street, and I'm here to respectfully request a variance of a three-foot side yard setback from the required 10-foot setback... of a three-foot side yard setback from the required 10-foot setback to build a garage on the south side of our property. We have received HOA approval, which also, which requires front-facing and side-facing neighbors to approve your plans, and that went to the HOA and was approved and was included in part of the backup for tonight's meeting, and I'm just here to ask for the request to be approved.
Okay, thank you. I'll open this for public comment. Does anyone wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Any discussion on the commissioners?
I'm just going to ask the same question. Will the structure match your home exactly and be the same color?
Absolutely. That's part of the plans that were submitted. It will match the home and as part of the HOA, as the gentleman said before. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Carrer?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Cherry, as well, for your indulgence. Question for you. So your neighbors, too, I guess if you're looking at the home, too, I'm assuming this is going to cover, this garage would be for the RV that you have there?
It is not. It will be on the south side of the property. It will actually block the RV. To build a garage tall enough to fit the RV, it would make it kind of tall and monstrous. So it actually, the garage shields the RV from our neighbors having to look at it. So the RV would actually go between the RV garage and the house.
So it'll be the house, the RV, then that garage over there, right?
Absolutely, yes.
That's a lot going on over there. And your neighbors, are the neighbors to the right there, are...
Yes, they have agreed to it. Like I said, we, you know, we're trying to not make it a huge garage. As you can see, RV is rather tall. We're in a one-story house, and to make it aesthetically appealing to the neighborhood, we thought building the garage separate for the RV would be...
And the garage would be used for what?
As like a workshop, storage for cars, because HOA does not allow us to park anything out be, you know, in front of a gate. My husband likes old cars, has old cars, and wants a workshop to be able to store cars and work on them.
How are they going to, how are the cars going to get into the garage?
As part of the plan, that the portion in front of the garage will be paved.
Where the trees are.
There's like a couple palm trees right there, yeah.
So those will go away?
Yes.
Pull in right there in the garage?
Yes. We have a large front yard on the north side, it's the west side, but to the north of our house as well.
And will you be working on the cars there?
Not in any capacity, like, except for, like, if he wants to change the oil. They're really for storage, to keep them out of the sun, you know, to preserve.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair, question for the applicant. I notice on your application you have a last name of Cherry on there as well. I'm just making sure. Are we related?
I don't think so.
Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion on item number forty-two, VAR six four eight four eight, for approval.
Subject to conditions?
Subject to conditions.
All right, please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action, subject to all conditions unless appealed to the clerk's office in ten days.
Moving on to item forty-three, VAR six four eight six three. The applicant is Yasenia Felix Rodriguez. The owner is Mojave Development Group, General Partnership. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow zero additional parking spaces where seven additional spaces are required for the conversion of a 499 square feet of floor area to public seating and waiting for an existing restaurant at 23 North Mojave Road, Suite D, in Ward Three. Staff recommends denial. Staff report?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant was before the planning commission in May of this year with a request to allow for the expansion of a beer wine cooler on sale use to expand into an adjacent suite as part of an overall restaurant expansion. At that time, the submitted materials depicted a balanced ratio of seating area to back-of-house area, which did not create a parking demand beyond the available onsite parking. The applicant has since amended the ratio of seating to back-of-house, which will result in self-imposed parking deficiency that will require the approval of the submitted parking variance. Staff cannot support the request and is recommending denial. Please note that additional letters of support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yasenia Felix, owner of El Canelo Restaurant. Yasenia Felix is my name. Good evening.
She's the applicant?
Yes, I am the applicant, and I would like to have the opportunity to grow more in business. I'm doing so good since the last time I got my license. I'm so, so happy, and I'm here to pray you, to implore you to get the opportunity to expand my business.
Anything else?
That's all I can say.
Okay. I'm going to open this for public comment. Does anyone here to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Let's start with the vice chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is in my ward. It's only a mile down the street from my house. I've been to this restaurant before, or maybe it was a different restaurant a couple of years ago, but there's never any cars here. It's an industrial district. There's more than enough parking, and so there's absolutely no issue with this. And just because we changed it from, we call it a lobby and we're, have more occupants classified in lobby versus other areas of the restaurant, this is not going to be an issue. So if there's no other questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
I think we're ready for a motion. Please do.
Mr. Chairman, item number forty-two, the, item number forty-three, VAR six four eight six three, I move for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion is to approve item forty-three. Please vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item forty-three is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, with regard to item forty-four, as I've stated previously tonight, D.R. Horton is a client of the law firm I work for and therefore puts me in a conflict of interest, so I will be abstaining on this. And I'll turn this over to the vice chair, Commissioner Schlotman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item number forty-four, waiver six four eight two five. Applicant owner, D.R. Horton Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no streetlights along Severance Lane, Elkhorn Road, and all interior streets where streetlights are required at the southeast corner of Severance Lane, Wallopie, Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, staff has no objection to the waiver of streetlights on the gated interior private streets. However, Elkhorn Road is a primary arterial and is planned to be an important east-west corridor in this part of the city of Las Vegas. Likewise, Severance Lane is a minor collector for the adjacent neighborhoods. As streetlights play a vital public safety role on public streets, their use is necessary, and therefore staff recommends denial of the request. If approved, a condition of approval would require the streetlights to be stubbed out along Severance Lane and Elkhorn Road for later use, or that compensation for future streetlights be contributed to the city. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing D.R. Horton in this matter. If I could get your attention to the overhead, you're very familiar with this piece of property. I and D.R., I've been representing D.R. Horton on this piece of property for the last probably two years for the development of this. Just to familiarize yourself with respect to the property, Wallopie is along our west boundary here. This is Severance, as I'm pointing out here, and to the south of us is Elkhorn. We've worked very closely with the neighbors in this area through the general plan amendment, through the zone change, through the tentative map, and the numerous of conditions that we put on this application as we're going through development. When we started with our development a few months ago, the neighbors in the area called, called the councilman's office, called us, and had some questions with respect to the development itself. One of the issues or concerns for them was whether or not we were going to be, having streetlights within our property and outside of our property. I know we had some discussions prior to, as we were going through the process, but that was one of the conditions that was never imposed. So what we did is, we worked with the city because we had to begin construction out there, so it didn't slow us down. So what we agreed to do is to come in then and file an application to address the neighbors' concerns. Where along Severance here, what we're willing to do, it's part of the staff's if and approved condition, is that we wouldn't, we will not put streetlights out here on Severance. However, we'll stub the area for future streetlights along our northern property line. Same thing for Elkhorn down here to the south of us. And just as a point of reference, the properties, as I'm showing you here, that go from my finger here down east of the property on Elkhorn, those areas have been withheld from having streetlights there. It's county properties. Conditions on those properties is required the developer to stub out for future streetlights there and work, excuse me, not streetlights, lights along Elkhorn itself, and that is a county condition imposed on the properties out there. So at the end of the day, the last thing I do want to mention is, interior to the site, they've asked us to remove the streetlights that was going to be built within the subdivision itself, and that's why we had the request on that also. So I wanted to give you a little bit of history. Like I said, you've, we've been here many times. I know Kathleen's here, one of the neighbors that lives right here that we've been working with on numerous occasions and working out everything and anything that comes up throughout the building process. So that being said, we'd ask you to approve the application with the if-approved conditions from Public Works, with the understanding of what the intent is and the reason why we're here once again on this, on this piece of property.
Thank you. This is, this was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And noting, there's several microphones, so please line up behind the microphones so we can get through this pretty quickly.
My name's Kathleen Bruce. I live at 9880 Elkhorn. That is a two-acre parcel adjacent to this property in the R and P. I totally support this request, and I would also like to thank Bob Gronauer and D.R. Horton. They have really worked with all of us in the R and P area, and we would have had more people here like we usually do, but we got like three other meetings that everyone's got to go to this in the next week or so. Anyways, the streetlights really pollute our area because we're all rural, and I have a picture. I don't know if you, if you need more proof, but the way that they've graded this, it's going to be very high, and it's kind of going to be above our properties. So streetlights would really be coming into our neighborhood and would, you know, affect our rural lifestyle. So I just want to be here to ask you to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Delton Atkinson. I live on 7428 Marbury Street. On your map, that's across the west side of North Wallopie. The neighbors and I, who have had many notices from the planning commission for waivers for this property, are not happy with a lot of them. In this particular one, we are pretty much in unison against having no streetlights. It is a safety issue that we are concerned about, so our recommendation is that we go with the staff denial and that this property not be allowed to have no streetlights, and especially on the major streets, Severance and Elkhorn. At some point in time, I would like to address that threw away, maybe in the public hearing, citizen participation part of this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Sanders. I live at 9945 Whittig Avenue, and I face the development, the D.R. Horton development, and as my other neighbor Kathy Bruce indicated, the grading is up 30 feet from our property, our property elevations. So putting the streetlights, we're asking for, asking for support of this proposal with D.R. Horton. They have worked with us. The aspect, I know that some of the Providence people have been concerned about the streetlights on Wallopie, and so those are there. That's fine on Wallopie. That's not a problem. However, if you put them on Elkhorn, Severance, and on the east side of the property, they are going to shine down into our properties. Because the elevation, it's like this, they're up here. I mean, they have literally built the dirt up farther than probably was necessary, and we're down here, just about 10 acres away for me. And for Kathy, it's even closer. So those lights, which we have not wanted, as our neighborhood has not wanted, would shine into our properties. And, but I respect what the Providence people have done, wanted. They wanted the lights along Wallopie. That won't affect us, but having them on Elkhorn would affect us. So that's why we're asking you to support the staff and what they're recommending, because they're working with us as a neighborhood, and we would really appreciate that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. Mr. Gronauer, would you like 30 seconds to comment on anything that was said?
Just two things I just wanted to comment on. As I neglected to mention, Wallopie, that we're going to have your lights and your full improvements on there. Elkhorn in Severance is proposed for stubbing for those lights for the future. That's the if-approved condition that one of the neighbors mentioned. As I, as I stated earlier, is the reason why we're here is because we've been working with the neighbors, and that's why we're requesting it. Otherwise, we'd be putting lights in.
Okay, thank you. Turn this over to the planning commission, starting with Commissioner Cherry.
Through the chair, I've received all the emails from the residents in the neighborhood, and I can say I will be supporting this, but I would like to see the condition of the stub outs that'll be there as well.
So a couple of comments myself. I've seen this, and I did receive a lot of comments from people from the neighborhood, but I'm also seeing 10 protest cards stating for safety that they would like to see the streetlights. And I do appreciate the two ladies that come up and, you know, I know that you're in a rural area, and you want to make sure that it remains dark. However, a lot of times in our city code, it requires shielding, and so this is probably going to be 75 feet off of, you know, off of the property line. Even though it is higher, it requires shielding to go down, so it shouldn't be illuminating into, you know, the neighboring properties. Now, I mean, it's becoming a battle. I mean, we're constantly seeing developers come here, not wanting to put in streetlights and not wanting to put in sidewalks, and then we see people pushing strollers and things like that down the street, and people getting hit. And I just seen it yesterday again. So, I mean, it's becoming harder and harder for me to say that I don't want to put in streetlights and I don't want to put in sidewalks. And then people are actually on the actual street versus being in a safe place. So I just, for those reasons, and due to the fact of seeing all the people that, I mean, I've seen at least eight people killed here over the past two years due to no sidewalks. So, and I know we're not talking about sidewalks, but we're talking about, we're talking about the streetlights, but still, same thing. So as a planning commissioner and trying to do the right thing for the community, it's starting to become harder and harder for me to support certain things like this. So you wouldn't see my support tonight.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cherry, like to...
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion on item forty-four, WVR six four eight two five, for approval, subject to conditions, with the condition that there would be stub outs for future lights.
Through you, vice chair.
Lucian?
Through you, vice chair. Public Works can address it, but I was just going to state that condition number five, as found in the staff report, addresses that.
And also in condition number five, I think it also states that developer must contribute stoplights or the money to put in the streetlights in the future. That's my motion.
Motion's on the floor for approval. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Director?
Mr. Vice Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on September 7th.
Thank you. All right, I'll be turning the meeting back over to Mr. Chairman. Chairman Moody.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman. We are now to the citizens' participation portion of the agenda, item forty-five. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Good evening, sir.
Again, my name's Delton Atkinson. I live, live at seventy-four, twenty-eight Marbury Street in the Providence community. I want to know if I may address any plans for the intersection of Elcorn and North Walopai, part of the development we just discussed.
You, you are welcome to discuss that.
In this particular area, those thousands of us who live in that Providence area and come down Elcorn must stop then at Walopai and take surface streets around the development in order to get down Elcorn again to go to our shopping districts down on Durango. The only section that does not allow us to go through is the development section, which we just discussed on North, excuse me, on West Elcorn. And I want to know if that's going to be allowed to be, give us access so, so that we don't have to take a circumference street to go past this one block area. I would hope the same thing doesn't happen to this intersection as happened one block away at Darrell Lane, where that street was blocked off. The city put in massive cement structure to make sure that nobody can drive straight from Darrell down that street going eastbound or coming out westbound. And so I want to know if I'm allowed to, or at least recommend that that intersection be allowed to have it be a through intersection. That means that someone like myself can come from Egan Crest, come down Elcorn, go through Wal, Walopai, and continue on down that road as far as I want, which is Darrell, which could be clear out to the casino at Aliante. Right now, if I wanted to walk it, bike it, or drive it, I've got to go around that area of development. If I wanted to go to the church on that next quarter down, I have to go completely around. So if the planning commission has authority over that intersection and can allow it to be a through street as it should be and probably was in the original plan, I'd like to see that go forth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would just say in answer to your question that because this is not a, an item on tonight's agenda, we can't take any action towards it, but we do appreciate your recommendations and your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Lucian with Public Works. Because we're talking about this intersection, the plans are already approved. I don't have a copy of the approved plans with me, but it is planned to go through. And that's, you know, that's why we're recommending denial on the, on the streetlights, because the street will go through and they'll be able to continue to go through all the way east, when, once it's fully built out.
And I assume when that happens, the appropriate stub outs that will already be in place can be lighted?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Former Commissioner Steve Evans, welcome to our meeting. You're a little late.
Hi, buddy.
Good to see you. All right. Seeing none, I will close tonight's meeting and adjourn.